Hello, I'd like to call to order the October 14th, 2019 workshop session of the Carmel Clay School Board to order. The roll call, Madam Secretary?
Board President Michael Kerschner is absent tonight, other board members present.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now like to move to the consent portion. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now moving on to our action item, we have a bid award for the new elementary school at Clay Center Road structural package. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. We recommend these, actually three bid awards to, first to JBM contractors in the amount of $315,400 and complete masonry in the amount of $400,000 and Indiana Steel Fabricating in the amount of $2,072,000. So the total's $2,787,400. As you noted, this is for the Clay Center Road Elementary School, or the elementary school on Clay Center Road. And so we're anxious to award these bids and get that project started.
May I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Nouse?
Yes, I was just wondering when the work will begin on the school and when they think the structural part of the school will be completed.
I'm gonna take a shot at this, but I got some help in the audience if I need it. They'll start fairly soon, once they get the shop drawings approved and so forth. The idea of awarding this now was to get as much as we could finish before winter, so that when we award that major bids for the rest of the construction, they'll be able to start with that early in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question here, so can you remind me what's the total budget for the elementary
school and how much has the board approved so far?
Well, you've actually approved the bonding for the project. We included about $1.5 million in the general obligation bond and then the balance in the, well, in the bond, the lease rental bond, which we will sell in the first quarter of 2020. And the total amount, I don't remember the exact number, but it's about $63 million for total cost.
Any further questions? May we take a vote on the bid award recommendations, including work for the new elementary school at Clay Center Road? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We now like to move on to our discussion portion of our meeting, which will be by Mrs. Leila Spanenberg, over our 2020 legislative priorities.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Browning. So as the delegate to the legislative session from the Indiana School Board Association and as our legislative liaison, I am reporting on what we've, what I've learned over the last couple of weeks since the Indiana School Board Association just approved their legislative priorities for the 2020 school year. So we'll begin with our 2020 legislators. Currently, so I remind everybody, we have legislators that we've reached out to. We always reach out to our local state legislators, as well as our congressional staff. And I have those listed there. We've got Senator Ford in Ruckelhaus and Victoria Sparts, and then our two representatives, Donna Shadley and Jerry Tor. All represent different portions of Carmel Clay schools. And our congressional, we've got a Representative Susan Brooks, as well as Mike Braun and Senator Todd Young. We have several legislative committees, and when we do send out letters and reach out to our legislators about some of our initiatives, we also reach out to those in charge of these standing committees, as well as the interim committees. And so I listed their names up on the screen as well for us if we want to know, as well as for the community, should they want to reach out to them as well. I think it would be prudent for me to share our Carmel Clay school guiding principles, since we are discussing our legislative priorities. Our guiding principles, as you recall, we developed these in 2015 with the help from the entire community. And we brought together as a board and approved these 10 guiding principles. They are at all school entrances, they're on our website, and we have them posted in our boardroom as well. And I just want to highlight students are at the center of every decision, and we end with fiscal responsibility is fundamental to achieving our vision. Now our 2019 legislative priorities are listed on the screen as well. We work very hard to share our vision for our school district, as well as for public education in general. A few of these legislative priorities were successful. The kindergarten date was changed, there was increased funding. Unfortunately, that was about it. So that has kind of, as we move along, that has kind of framed the thought process that we have for this upcoming year. The Indiana School Board Association approved at the delegates' assembly the 2020 legislative foundational statements. They are listed here. I would say these foundational statements certainly do align with the belief and values that we hold true in Carmel Clay schools. I've listed those. They're also listed in the pamphlet that each of you have. I picked these up at one of the advocate seminars that they had at the Indiana School Board Association Fall Conference on September 30th and October 1st. So each one of us have those inside the booklet. They have different ways of advocating for public schools, as well as information about the State House, different hours, and contact information. They also list the legislative priorities that were recently approved and the foundational statements. So here we have the foundational statements that I believe all public schools certainly do support. The legislative priorities for the Indiana School Board Association, which were approved by the delegates, are these eight initiatives. And they're all pretty straightforward. The one that I do want to point out, number seven, says "School Board Compensation," that is the title. They're not wanting to change the compensation, they're wanting to change who's responsible for oversight of compensation. As it stands now, and I'll read exactly what it says here, "The per diem for all school boards in the state of Indiana is established by the Board of Trustees for the Indianapolis Public Schools." And that is determined by the rates, which are restricted by the Marion County City County Council. And what the Indiana School Board Association would really like to see happen is have that authority given to the Indiana State Board of Education, which certainly seems to make far more sense. But I wanted to be sure that people didn't get the wrong impression that we're looking for more money. We just want to be sure that oversight is with the right group of people. So as we look ahead, every year we've established, since 2012, we've established legislative priorities. And I met with Dr. Bearsford, and we are, we like our legislative priorities, but seeing that very few of them actually move forward, and what we have really been striving to do is develop a relationship with our legislators, so we can provide them with good information to move forward initiatives that support our school system and public schools in general. And so our idea this year is to change how we're doing things. And our goal, which I included, and it's on the slide, is to partner with our legislators in assisting providing accurate information to enhance educational programming and to avoid unintended consequences or unfunded liabilities of new legislation. So our goal would, that is our goal, and in doing so, we'd like to have one statement, and we don't really have the language of that statement, but really stating that the board's goal and willingness to assist our legislators regarding educational initiatives. And there are certainly, there are very, we have a lot of commonalities and a common interest, local choice for the ESA compliance, deregulation, dispute resolution reform for special education due process, improved referendum communication rules, and accrual accounting shifts. And these are all areas that our legislators have already reached out to our school system for more information, and we would like to be that conduit to supply them with good options for language in these areas and ideas to move forward some legislation that would really have a positive effect, not only on, for Carmel Clay schools, but for all of our schools in Indiana. So our thought is, we would have a statement sharing our willingness to assist our legislators, include our common interests, include our guiding principles, and we would certainly send it off to our legal counsel to ensure what we're including is acceptable, and that it would be viewed in a very positive light by our legislators, since they work directly with our legislators quite often. So in moving forward, we would put together our letter to gain additional feedback from the board, consult our legal counsel on letter language. We would send the electronic letter, actually, to all of our legislators across the state, not just our immediate legislators. And our timeline would be actually quite brisk. We would move ahead very quickly. We would approve a statement in our common interest by our October 28th meeting, prepare the language of the letter for us to review and change as we see fit, and send our letters in early November. Also, we do have our Hamilton County Legislative Luncheon. We're not cer, I'm not certain yet who's hosting that, and I know Dr. Bearsford is checking with other districts to see who is willing to host that. But we would certainly like to have our letter provided. We'll also provide at that legislative luncheon materials about Carmel Clay schools and our demographics. Dr. Bearsford, do you have any comments about ideas moving forward?
Sure. First, I'll let you know that Hamilton Heights will be hosting this year. We got that word today, and trying to narrow it down to a couple of dates in December. So that luncheon's being, it's being planned as we work today, actually. So I'll get that information to you as soon as possible. But I think you really clearly explained kind of the thought process on it. We want to be in a position to be able to influence, you know, legislation to be positive for schools and positive for our state. And a lot of times, the legislature really needs information from us, which we're getting, if we can develop these relationships and these communication pathways, we can make it very clear to them kind of what the impact of what some of the ideas about changes in legislation would have on schools, whether that's financial, or the daily life of a teacher, or, you know, how that would affect our organizations. And I don't think anyone in the legislature wants unintended negative consequences as a result of the legislation. So the more we have communication and good relationships with the folks downtown, I think the more positive effect and influence we can have on our, not only Carmel Clay schools, but like you said, across the state, that we can bring Indiana schools up to that level we want it to be. And right now, that's going to be a focus, I hope, for the legislature, to rise Indiana up, you know, from the, you know, the middle and lower end of the pack to be in a state where teachers want to come here to be teachers and be part of the educational system in Indiana.
I also want to note that this is the short session, and it is not a budget year. So very few, as I reflect on what the Indiana School Board Association has as their legislative priorities, several of those are financial, and I'm not certain, it's good to have that conversation, but those changes probably won't happen. And so shifting our initiative to more of the relationship and provider of good information for this short session, I think would be worth a try. And I do open it up for questions for Dr. Bearsford or myself, or comments or ideas that you might have as well.
I have a question. On the, I think it's the previous slide, you are that, the common interest? Is that where you would incorporate specifics, where before we'd have the list? Or is that?
Yes.
Okay. So we would still, because I do want to make sure that we are still in, that things that are most important, that we are specific? So is that kind of what, that area of the letter you're, that you're thinking of?
Be specific is to?
So, maybe if you go back to our, this year's priorities?
The states?
No. No, ours. I'm just gonna pick a random one. Okay. Enhanced teacher recruitment and retention program. So is that something that we could decide? Not exactly that, I'm using that as an example.
Right.
That's something that we could put as our common interest? That that is a common interest that we have? Is that kind of what you're thinking with common interest?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, like I said, that we're addressing some of these high priorities that we have. Without being, I just don't want it, for lack of a better term, a generic letter that says, "We want to be your friend."
Yes, and it won't be.
Okay.
So, and we will approve as a board whatever we send out, that language that Dr. Bearsford and I, after it's been reviewed by general counsel, that will go to all of us, and so it'll be an agreed-upon letter.
Okay.
It won't be something that I'm sending independently.
Of course. And I thought, what you said is how, I thought, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, anyone?
I, I just don't see the common interests as our legislative priorities.
They're not necessarily legislative priorities. They are areas with which-
We have an interest-
And they have a common interest in-
With the state.
Yes.
But they're not our list of legislative priorities.
Correct.
Okay. I thought that's what you told.
Yes.
Katie, but?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Correct. But that doesn't mean some of our legislative priorities aren't their priorities, and they just did not get moved along. So if we do have common interest in any of our, any of our priorities that had not been addressed, we will include those.
Okay.
Yes.
So next meeting, we will be approving the statements in the common interests that we send to legislators, and do we also take actions to our legislative priorities?
We, I am not planning to present any legislative priorities. I am planning to have an agreed-upon statement that we will include in the letter. And in the past, we've not approved a letter in a business meeting, so I did not think we had to do that, but I will defer to our president. What I do want us to do, to approve our statement in our common interest. So what we would like to include in the letter, the common interest that the legislators have that we have, so those common interests, and then the statement I would like us to approve at a public meeting.
Gotcha. So again, question?
Yes.
Where's the legislative priorities?
Our priority will be that statement.
We're having one priority?
That's what we're proposing.
Well, there may be some discussion there.
Let me, let me chip in here a little bit.
Please do.
Yeah, what's been done in the past is that we've had a list of legislative priorities, and then like the ISBA has their list of priorities, and then like the IAPSS has their list of priorities. And then those are all sent to the legislature, and they look at all those, and then they work on legislation. And if you look like at last year's, like Leila presented, those priorities, there isn't just much traction when it comes down to us making a list and giving to legislators. But we feel like we'll be in a better position of influence if instead of saying, you know, "You need to do this, 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 and this," saying, as we work through the legislative session, "We stand ready to work with you, shoulder-to-shoulder, side-by-side, and give you the information from the school level of what, the legislation that you're looking at, what impact that has on the school districts and on the students of Indiana." And then also can give them ideas like of what unintended consequences, like how much that might cost the district by making that decision. And where sometimes funds will be used to pay for a mandate that could be used in the classroom. And when, by simply pointing that out and being in a position of, to fill, you know, to give that information to legislature, they will turn their thoughts from, maybe we don't want to take that money out of, you know, the classroom, and we want to keep it where it is, rather than have another mandate, you know, an unfunded mandate of sorts. So really, what we're, you know, as far as the legislative priority, the legislative priority would be something more along the lines of, we want to work with our legislators and keep communication lines open to avoid any of those issues. And then we have some things that are being discussed in legislation that we want to weigh in on, because we think it's important. And, you know, you listed some of those. But as far as those being priorities, they're definitely things we're interested in. But I think by, you know, making a list and giving it to legislators, we're just not getting much of a return on that. But we have made some significant movement forward by partnering with legislators and getting involved in groups and conversations with the committees and with the different legislators, and we're actually getting a positive results from that. So in other words, we're doing a shift, is when it comes right down to it. It's because we keep doing the same old thing, the same way, and we get the same result over and over again, well, you know, we want to try something different and say, "We're going to be a district that wants to work with legislators. We want to tell you what would help and what would hurt, and we want to be that resource for legislators." And I'll tell you right now, my work with legislators over the years, there's two things that they really pay attention to. One is stories. You know, when we tell them the story of what happens as a result, and why we need certain legislation, or why we don't need certain legislation. And the other thing they pay attention to is costs, you know, because there's one way to fund schools, is to give schools more money. Another way to fund schools is to reduce costs by eliminating some things that we have to pay money for, that we could, you know, achieve without paying as much money. We can be more efficient with our money. And those two things are always things that legislators are interested in. So I know it's kind of different from what we're used to, but, you know, it's, do we want to keep doing what we're always doing and getting the same result we always get? Or do we want to try something different and see if we can, you know, perhaps have more positive results from that? So that's kind of the layout.
And with this something different, this seems like a great time to try our something different. It is a short session, and it's not a budget year. And if we find that this is effective, and we want to add additional ideas for next year, great. Or if we want to completely change it next year, but as we were looking at what we have done in the past, and how we can be progressive, and continuing to see how we can be better, because we're the best at getting better, we just thought we would try something new.
I know that we have a goal of always working with legislators. I mean, that's always been a goal of ours, and I think that's increased over the years, because I think they now have an understanding that we are there to help, rather than criticize and make trouble for people in the legislature. I still think it's important for them to know what's important to us as a school system and what we would like to see in legislative initiatives. So just to say we have common interests, of course we have common interests, you know, our students are our common interest, that's the big one. But I still think they need to be aware of what's important to our school system and what we think should be happening out there. Now, if we don't want to call them legislative priorities, that's fine, but I still think we need to let them understand that there are certain things that we would like to see happen at the state.
If you look at the common interest that we have listed, these are all specific items that we would like to see updated and changed. Shifting the accrual accounting, and you know, Dr. Bearsford has already had some conversations about ESA compliance, and legislators have reached out to us already. So as we continue those conversations, we're hopeful that some positive change will happen. But I don't think that any of these that are listed are areas that we would not have as a legislative priority. I mean, we absolutely want deregulation. There are, the overhead for so many of these initiatives that, and, anyway, there's a lot that we can do to help our bottom line and reduce expenses, and part of that is included in deregulation. The dispute resolution, that is absolutely a priority for our school district, and I know that had some traction last year. So why not continue to have those conversations? The improved referendum communication rules, on what we can include, that has been a priority for us for several years, and we will continue with that. So I suppose our common interests are our priorities, and we will be including our common, our guiding principles as well.
Maybe we should just say interests slash priorities? I don't know. I'm just having a hard time with the word interest.
But see, priorities, well, see, I feel like priorities make it ours, and interests makes it their common, it's, we have mutual agreement that these are important, and it just seems like a more flexible, inclusive word, in my opinion.
Okay, I will think about it.
Okay.
I do think you, you kind of explained it right, Pam, though. This is a different way of communicating, it's a different way of approaching. We are certainly going to communicate our interests with our legislators of things that we think would have a positive impact on Carmel Clay schools and other schools, you know, in the, in the state of Indiana. We're certainly going to communicate those things. But we're going at it a different way, and I think Leila explained that really clear, really well, in that we're going to be more relational about the thing, instead of, you know, being, you know, in a position where, here's what we want you to do. It's like, what can we do together to accomplish these things?
Okay.
So I think a lot of it is, you know, it is a different way of phrasing it, or a different way of accomplishing something.
Right, but you just said, common interests that have a positive, that will have a positive influence on Carmel Clay schools. Something like that, rather than just labeling it common interests, may be a little bit more specific.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Leila, for all the hard work that you put into that. We now are going to go to our workshop topic, where it sounds like we need to start planning a birthday party. So tonight, we are going to hear from Mr. Andrew Wright from the Carmel Clay Historical Society about the history of Carmel Clay schools. Mr.? Yeah, do you want us to come down here? Was that the thought? Okay. We're gonna convene down there.
Can you hear me? My own through here? Okay. Hello? Can you hear me? All right.
a year researching the early schools and Carmel, and published our results in the book that Dr. Bearsford has over- over there, and we're hoping that it can be something useful to Carmel Clay schools. This project was special for a couple reasons. One was that we discovered that Carmel High School was a bit older than we initially thought, and I'll get into that in a little bit. The other reason it was special is because we found a lot more memories and stories about these old schools than we had anticipated finding. And these allowed us to tell specifically what was happening in Carmel schools rather than writing the general history based on what was typical at the time that we thought we were going to write. And that was due in large part to this man. This is John F. Haynes. He was born in 1856 in the East Branch neighborhood, which was a community of Quakers up by 146th Street and Gray. It was where the three townships met, Washington, Noblesville, and what was then Delaware Township. Haynes attended school in East Branch, and then for four years, he attended school at Carmel High School. Then he went back and taught at the school at East Branch, taught at the school at Pleasant Grove, which is down near Home Place. Then he was principal at Carmel High School from 1883 to 1886, then principal at Sheridan, principal at Noblesville, Noblesville Superintendent, and finally, he was Hamilton County Superintendent for 13 years. So Haynes spent nearly half a century working in education in Hamilton County. And in the last decade of his life, he wrote a regular column for the Noblesville newspaper in which he reflected on his time as a student, teacher, and administrator. And those recollections, along with some from other prolific nostalgists in Carmel, provided us with a very vivid picture of what early school life was like. And let's just go ahead and jump right into the history. When the settlers, well, for several decades after the settlers arrived, Carmel was still very much a wilderness. This description I'm going to read comes from John Mendenhall. He was born on Carmel's east side in 1844, and this is the Carmel that he grew up in in the 1840s and 1850s. He wrote, "I remember the country as almost a solid forest extending many miles in every direction. Deep, dark woods and so still, one could almost hear the sunbeams as they glinted through the tall trees. Deer, bears, foxes, and occasionally a small pack of wolves roamed the forest, which made life interesting to the small boy." This was the environment in which these pioneer schools were conducted. When John's father and the other settlers arrived in the early 1820s, the only thing that was here was the remnants of the Delaware Indian Village. With the exception of George Ketchum and his family, the Delaware had moved out of the state several years prior. And so there were no schools in the early 1820s in Carmel, so Ketchum's children and those of the settlers attended a school in Marion County. In 1830, the Quakers living near downtown Carmel held the first school of record in an abandoned cabin. In 1833, they established the Richland Preparative Meeting and built a meeting house. This isn't it, of course, that school's long gone. But it was a crude building. It didn't have a fireplace or a stove. They heated the school by burning charcoal and boxes made of clay and mortar. They didn't have glass windows. They had greased paper windows that were translucent and let a little light in. And throughout the 1830s and 1840s, there were at least a dozen other log cabin schools built in Carmel. These schools were subscription schools in which a teacher would come into the community and draw up a contract called an article. They would specify what subjects they would teach and how long the school term would be. And when enough families had subscribed, they would open the school. These teachers were often single males and transient. They would move from schoolhouse to schoolhouse each term. From 1837 to 1861, the county had a panel of examiners who would certify these teachers, but pretty much anybody who applied was certified. In fact, there was a good story. An applicant came in and was asked what preparations he had made for teaching, and he replied that he had his wood cut for the winter, and that was good enough. LSA Hutchins was county superintendent for 18 years, and in 1916, he was reflecting on his days as a student in these pioneer schools, and this is what he had to say of the teachers. He said, "Some of the teachers were about as well-educated as a sixth-grade pupil in the district schools of today, and some no farther advanced than the average third-grade pupil." These schools were pretty wild. They were one-room, of course, and in that one room, you might have as many as 20 to 30 students, and they ranged in ages from 6 to 25. So imagine being a teacher, teaching that many students across that many levels of ability and maturity. And really, they didn't. They were more schoolmasters than teachers. These schools were conducted as loud schools, and all the learning that occurred was through rote memorization. The students would all recite their lessons out loud all at once, and they'd try to do so loudly so that they could be heard over their fellow students. And it might sound like utter chaos, but the teachers generally maintained order with the threat of brutality. I found a statement in an 1838 Noblesville newspaper. It said, "Without liberal use of the birch, it is impossible to make boys smart." And that's really the most common punishment was they would hit them with sticks. Other common punishments were hard labor. They would make them chop wood for hours outside or dig holes for hours. And I could go on and on, listing the creative and horrible ways they punished these students because it left such an impression on the students that this topic was frequently included in the memories and stories that we found. These harsh practices were on the decline in the later half of the century, but in 1889, four Hamilton County teachers were arrested for abuse, which tells us that it was still going on that late in the century, but it was also being policed. Now, there was a strange custom that flipped this power dynamic on its head. Over the Christmas holiday, the students expected to receive a treat from their teacher, and if they did not, they would drag their teacher out of the classroom, take them to a creek or a pond, cut a hole in the ice, and throw them in the freezing water. It was called ducking the teacher or ducking the master. And this, there was even an incident as late as 1903 in Sullivan, Indiana, in which five schoolgirls and one schoolboy tied their female teacher to an iron trough and threw her in a pond and left her there. And she was thankfully rescued. She caught pneumonia but recovered, and the students were all arrested. But that was the pioneer schools. They were wild. In 1852, a good change occurred. Indiana passed the Free School Law, which called for the creation of public school districts in every township, and these were placed under the administration of the township trustee. So new schools were built in Indiana at a rate of about 600 per year. Sawmills on Cool Creek and Williams Creek allowed Delaware and Clay Township to replace some of the log schools with framed buildings like this one. This is the schoolhouse at Pleasant Grove near Home Place where Haynes taught. Other good changes were that the township offered teacher training for the first time in a one-day training seminar called the Township Institute. And the county followed up years after with a five-day county institute, and several years after that, a five-week county normal or teacher training school. The learning that occurred in these district schools was still through recitation, and the students often competed to stand at the head of the class. Serious students supplemented their public schooling with, by attending a subscription term in the spring, and often they would attend special schools devoted to a certain subject of interest. In and around Clay and Delaware Township, they had schools for geography, music, spelling, penmanship. And it's amazing what these students could fit in a day. Typical school, they started with early morning chores, then a walk to school of a mile or two on dirt roads through whatever weather. Schools from 8 to 5, then they'd take the long walk home, do more evening chores, and then go to these special schools. And often, those were another trek. John Mendenhall walked two miles to his penmanship school. John Haynes walked two and a half miles to a singing school in Noblesville Township, and his walk to Carmel High School every day was three and a half miles. Literary societies were also popular in the district schools. This is a map of all the district schools in the neighborhoods in Carmel. I'm looking on the east side. There were literary societies at East Branch, Hazel Valley, Rural Valley, Carmel, and Poplar Ridge. And one of my favorite things that we have at the Historical Society in our collection is we have anthologies published by some of these early literary societies that date from 1859 to 1861 or 62. Now, there wasn't a lot to do in Carmel in the 1850s and 1860s, so these literary society meetings were very popular. William Kinzer of the Kinzer Pioneer Family wrote that they drew as big a crowd as the baseball games. And Kinzer and others would travel several miles outside their district to attend the literary society meetings in other districts. Now, one of the things that sets our city apart is that we had two of the earliest public high schools when these were a rarity in the entire state. They were both built by Quaker communities, and the first, this one, was initially operated as a private academy. This is the Poplar Ridge Seminary. It was built in 1860 by the Quakers of the Poplar Ridge Monthly Meeting. They wanted it to be an exceptional school, so they were committed to hiring good teachers and paying them well. Isaac Jones was the first. He was hired at $60 a month, which ruffled some feathers in the community. The farmers wanted to know why the schoolteacher was making $3 a day in the schoolhouse while they were toiling in the fields for 75 cents, but the community didn't waver, and eight years later, they raised his salary to $75 a month. For the first decade, the school was full to overflowing and drew students from all over the county. But as the public schools improved, the private academies struggled, and in 1871, the school closed. That fall, it burned to the ground, caught fire, and so the monthly meeting donated it to the township, which, or the property to the township, which rebuilt the school. I don't know why they didn't update the design. But they rebuilt the school and opened a public graded school, and the high school portion of that graded school was in operation from 1873 to 1888. It was Clay Township's public high school. This next bit is what made the newspapers and got us excited. In 1868, the Quakers of the Richland Monthly Meeting built this two-story brick schoolhouse on the southeast corner of Smoky Row and Range Line. And for many years, maybe a century or more, it was believed that this school was initially operated as a private academy just as Poplar Ridge had. But we found some documents in the basement of the old county courthouse that stated otherwise. What actually happened was the Quakers did build the building, but they immediately leased it to the township, which furnished the building and opened a public graded school on January 4th, 1869. For many years, it was called Carmel Academy. In 1872, it was called Richland High School, and then later Carmel High School. This is an announcement published in the Noblesville Paper in 1882, announcing the fall term of Carmel High School. This is five years before Carmel was thought to have been established. In 1887, Clay and Delaware Township partnered to build this building, which has long been credited as being the first Carmel High School. However, the staff and students of this building and this school understood it to be a continuation of the original school. And that was evident in the, in a history of Carmel published in the 1901 yearbook. This is what they had to say about the schools. They wrote, "In the year 1868, the Richland Academy was built, which was occupied until 1888, when the school was moved to the present high school building." And that characterization of the relationship between the two schools was echoed in a 1919 yearbook edition of the Carmel Standard Paper, and it's also supported by the fact that the staff and teachers carried over from one building to the next. And the 1880s, we saw a modernization of the school system in Hamilton County. This really started with the election of LSA Hutchins to county superintendent in 1885. He standardized a course of study for the county. He significantly improved teacher training, and he worked to replace the one-room schoolhouses with modern graded schools in every township. And the 1887 school was kind of a product of his efforts. Delaware and Clay Township replaced several of their one-room schools with brick buildings, and one of them is still standing. This is the Blue School. It was built in 1903. Today, it's a residence, and it's on the corner of Haverstick Road and 106th Street. Around the turn of the century, the township, especially Clay and Delaware, they were the first, began to consolidate their school districts, and this culminated with the construction of Clay Center in 1911. When this school opened, we were down to four schools. There was a school in Gray, that's the new name of East Branch. There was a school in Gray, the Blue School, Clay Center, and Carmel High School. And when Carmel High School opened its new school in 1922, that we call the Old North Building, we were down to just Clay Center and Carmel High School until Orchard Park opened in 1956. So one of our biggest takeaways from this project was that Carmel's legacy of excellence in education really does go back to the settlers. I'll close with this quote from William Kinzer. He was born in 1832 and grew up in these pioneer schools, and this is what he had to say about his generation. "I must say that the people of this vicinity generally made it a point to get about all out of the schools that was possible under the prevailing conditions of society at this time, and the result has been that many have gone out from this school and have made their mark as useful citizens." You got any questions? I'll take them. Uh huh.
Yes. Is that a picture of Old North?
No, this is a-
Do you have a picture of Old North?
No, I don't have one up here. This is the Clay Center School.
Okay, because Old North used to be up by the high school.
Yeah.
And we lived in Carmel when Old North was still there.
Oh, yeah.
And EFC was right next door to it in a little red building that was, looked like somebody, you know, like a trailer that somebody brought in. And it used to be right next door. And then I worked down in the basement of that with a reading clinic, and they bused kids in from the whole school district for the reading clinic. That's where our reading worked in there. And then after that, they moved, that's when Orchard Park was closed, and they moved all of the kids at Orchard Park into this building. And Dwayne Aiken was the principal there.
When you say closed, is that when they had the scare where everybody's getting sick?
Yeah, right.
Okay, yeah. That was late 50s, wasn't it? 58, something like that?
No.
Or later?
That was in, not that one.
Okay.
Geez. No, that was in the, let's see, it was in the 70s.
Okay.
So this picture of Clay Center, was that the name of the school? Clay Center?
Clay Center School.
Did it have a name?
Yeah, I don't know. Can I zoom in on here? You can kind of see it. Let's see.
And where was this located?
This was on the northeast corner, let's see if I can zoom in here, of Clay Center Road and 116th Street. You can see it says Clay Center School right there on the plaque. Eh, you can't really see it, but that's what it says. And I think it's 1911 underneath it.
They don't have a name, and we need to resurrect this name.
Yeah, there was, the history of Clay Center, it's in that book if you want to see the details, but they, like all the districts or most of the districts, there was a log cabin school in the pioneer era. Most of them had it. And then they, school number seven was the Clay Center School, it was just one of those one-room framed schoolhouses. Then they built, well, let's see, no, actually, it was this building. This is the Poplar Ridge Seminary. This is the second one that Clay Township built. I don't know how they did this, but they did this with a lot of buildings. They picked it up and they moved it from the Poplar Ridge District and replaced the old Clay Center Schoolhouse with this building. And then they dug a well on the property, and they had sort of a flowing well, you know, the flowing well in Carmel. They had one of those situations where this, all of a sudden, all this water gushed out, and they piped it down to a large steel tank on the property that was for public use. People would come by and fill up jugs. And it was so popular, they thought about opening a sanitarium in the area, and they renamed the school for several years Fountain School. So it had two names. It was Clay Center for a long time, and then for less than a decade, but maybe seven years, this school was called Fountain School, and that's the schoolhouse that was at Clay Center. And then they, Clay Center was one of the first districts to consolidate, or I'm sorry, Poplar Ridge was one of the first districts to consolidate when they moved this building down to Clay Center, and they replaced this building with the, with this school. And it was in operation from officially 1912 to 1956, and then they reopened it, I think, in 1958 when Orchard Park was overcrowded. And it was only open for a year then, and then they closed for good and they tore it down. But yeah, Clay Center or Fountain School were two names of schools in that area.
Okay, I would like to throw out food for thought. In our school, I would love to see a nice wall that has the history of the name and the school. With some pictures and lots of information that you have either in your book or that the Carmel Historical Society can help put together. I think that would be a neat partnership to have, something.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Documenting all of this. This is fascinating.
There's pictures of three of the schools. We don't have a picture of the log cabin school, of course, but there is the, there is a picture of the one-room framed house and then the building that I showed you that was called Fountain School that used to be the Poplar Ridge Seminary. So we have pictures of three of the four old schoolhouses from that area.
Why can't that be really, does my two cents?
Do you know where this is located?
Do you know where this is located, and where it was located specifically?
Yeah, this was on the northeast corner of Clay Center, and let's go back to the district math. Yeah, and 116th. They, these schools moved around a lot, and they, like I said, physically picked them up and moved them. I think the original school was on the northwest corner. And the log cabin school was further east. The specific details are in there, but I don't remember off the top of my head. But this one was where it has number seven there.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So what prompted you to, I might have missed that, I hope I didn't, but what prompted you to start seeking more information to uncover all of it?
Sure. They give me free rein to research whatever I want, so I just picked topics. And I don't think, I hadn't intended on doing anything as elaborate as the research that I ended up doing. I really was just collecting locations and dates. We didn't have a lot of, this was a subject that we knew very little about. We knew the general area of some of the schoolhouses and some of the dates about when they were built, but we didn't have the details, and I didn't expect to find the details. But as I kept digging, I realized that there was, we had something special with real, you know, specific information about what was happening at these schools. And so I just kept digging until I ran out of new information.
Could you talk to him a little bit about just the history of high schools in Indiana? Because this would put Carmel High School as one of, at least one of the first 10 or less high schools.
Oh, yeah, I think less. It's been a while since I've looked at this. I believe the first recognized public high school, now, there were private schools earlier than this, but if we're talking public high school, the first was in Evansville, I believe. It's called Central High School now, maybe? And it was, started in 1853 or 1854. And it sort of changed formats throughout the years. One year, it was, I think, a boys' school, then it was a girls' only school, and then it was co-ed. The first high school in Carmel was 1860. That was the Poplar Ridge Seminary. And it was a private school until 1873. Other schools at the time, there was, there was another, where was it? New Albany, maybe? I can't think of it. There was another public high school that predates the ones in Carmel. And then it was Shortridge in 1864. And Shortridge will often, they often claim to be the first public high school. I'm gonna let them have that fight with Center High School or Central High School. But I think there were two before Shortridge. I just can't remember what the other one was. And then Carmel High School comes online in 1869, and it may have been the fourth. It's hard to say because there's not a list.
1882?
1869 for Carmel High School.
Was it Carmel?
It changed names a bunch. These schools didn't really have official names. It would, it was just kind of a DBA, sort of, a Doing Business As. So for a while, it was Carmel Academy. Often in the newspapers, it would just be called the Carmel School or the Richland School. It billed itself as Richland High School for a while, and we know that because there are advertisements or announcements for its school term where it has published something calling itself Richland High School. And then, of course, we, I showed you the one for Carmel High School. The earliest that I've found Carmel High School, I think, is 1881. But I think it was being called Carmel High School before that. There are mentions of the school in Carmel, not the school in Richland, which was kind of the name of the district at the time. But yeah, I think that we, in terms of public high schools in Indiana, I think we're in the top five, top six. I've only found three that predate Carmel High School, but you have to leave room for some more that, you know, just didn't show up on searches. And then Poplar Ridge was a public high school for Clay Township. So Carmel was the public high school for Delaware. Clay Township was the public high school for, or I'm sorry, Poplar Ridge was the public high school for Clay Township from 1873 to 1888. And it was in the 1870s that they started to build more graded schools, which were elementary through high school in one building. And they started to have some of those within Hamilton County as well. But we had, we had two of the earliest, and it was the Quakers who believed that education was so important that decided to come up with the funds to do that. I don't believe that if we hadn't started as a Quaker community that that would have happened for us. Because in fact, in Hamilton County, there were four early high schools, all of them except for Carmel started as private academies, and they were all Quaker schools. And it was because they were arguing. There were three major Quaker communities right around this area, in Carmel, Poplar Ridge, and then Westfield, and they argued about where do they want to build a high school? They wanted to build one, and because they couldn't come to an agreement, they built three. They each had one. Westfield's was 1860, I believe, also. And that building is, it's still, what is it now? It's a Bible college, Union Bible College or something? But that building's still there and still being used. Uh-huh?
Haynes was supposed to have been the first person who did the first stoplight in Carmel, too? So, I mean, there was somebody named Haynes, that's not the same person?
Same, same family, not same person.
Same family?
Yeah.
I have a comment and a question. The first one, it's like staring at this map as you're talking. It's interesting to see how certain schools are where other schools are.
Yes.
Like Rural Valley of Mohawk Trails. Hazel Valley is near Cherry Tree. I'm not as familiar on the west side, but, I mean, and it makes sense, though, with land ownership, that it would continue on. But I just think that's interesting. And my question is, where can we buy your book?
Oh, Historical Society, we're selling for five dollars at the Monon Depot, and I would have brought some for all of you, but I am out.
That's good.
We here are printing more. They're at the printer this week, but we don't know how many we're gonna sell, so we're printing them in small batches. But yes, I want to do something with that because I think that they do. They correspond with some of the current schools. And so the idea is just to put something on our website that the schools can learn about what, the history of their specific school and what was there in their area.
And I think we mentioned earlier the third-grade field trips, how that's still, you know, a huge tradition. And I think it would be so neat to, you know, a little Mohawk Trails third grader to see where there used to be a school there, and it was called this, and et cetera. Like, that personal touch is really exciting.
Yeah. And for some, we know a lot. Some, we know very little. The ones in West Clay, unfortunately, we don't know a whole lot about it, with the exception of school number four, there's an exciting story. That's in the other booklet that I gave you that happened down there. But yeah. And East Branch was a, it was jointly operated by the three townships. And when it closed, the reason it closed was because most of the students came from East Delaware, which is now Carmel. And so when they opened up the Carmel High School, Old North Building, they just didn't have any more students because they all came from Carmel. That neighborhood got a post office, which was on the Carmel side of 146th Street, and that's when they changed the name to Gray. But it was another Carmel school, even though it was located on the north side of 146th.
Well, West, sorry. Oh, shoot, forgot. The school that's on 116th Street, wasn't it in Woodbrook? Woodbrook, thank you. It's near Mattsville. I mean, it's on the Mattsville Pike. And I remember taking the kids and showing them where the store was across the street.
Yeah, that's still there.
Yeah, still there. Yeah, that was cool.
That school is located right across the street from White Chapel Church, which is still there. Or it was located across the street. And unfortunately, that's one of the two that we don't have a picture for that schoolhouse. We got lucky because in 1892, the county superintendent wanted a school, a picture of every schoolhouse. And so he sent a photographer around. And for some reason, some of the schools in Delaware Township, the picture, it just doesn't, no one can find it. So we don't have one for Mattsville, and we don't have one for Hazel Valley. But every other district on there, we have a picture of at least one of the old schoolhouses.
So the East Branch Gray School?
Yes.
Did they then turn that into the Friends, or the Gray Friends Church?
No, it was located-
Is it the same building?
Right next door. They were adjacent to each other.
Okay.
So Gray Friends Church is right on the corner, and then the school was just east of it.
So the school is no longer standing, just the church?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so on the map, 10 is Carmel High School?
Yes. That represents the first Carmel High School. Yeah, it was called District School Number 10. Because of, because there were two townships right there, they, each township had its own, what was called Common School, which was anything below high school grade-wise. So there was one on Main Street on the Clay Township side, and then there was one, I think it was Range Line and maybe Fourth Street Southeast, was the Common School for Delaware Township. And then Carmel High School was also, it had a Common School, it had primary and intermediate departments within the same building. So there was some redundancy and overlap. But yeah, they had three primary schools right in Carmel back then.
So we only had one high school? Do we continue with one high school?
Kind of.
Okay.
Because there were, there were two, if you're calling, in Carmel, within the town of Carmel, yes, there was one high school. But within what is now Carmel, there were two high schools in operation at the same time. The overlap was from the 1873 to 1888. Clay Township had its high school, which was the Poplar Ridge Seminary. And then Delaware Township had its high school, which was that, the Carmel High School. And you saw the Poplar Ridge building. Let's see, it's this one here. In 1888, that building was severely outdated. And so Delaware and Clay partnered to build one high school. They did away with this one and just shared it. And that was the 1887, this one, that school. We call it the 1887. It opened in 1888. So there were two high schools within what is now Carmel in operation at the same time, public high schools, but that was for that short 14-year period.
Any further questions? Thank you so much. This was an amazing opportunity for us to be able to learn more, and I'm excited, and I'm gonna wait for your book, and I can't wait to be able to share that with my own children. So thank you for taking the time and coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We will next move to our updates from Dr. Beresford.
Thank you. First, I want to, again, thank Annie for coming and sharing that with us. I thought you'd be interested in the revelation that Carmel High School may be older than we even imagined. As one of the first, I'll go ahead and go out on a limb, you know, at one of the first four high schools in Indiana. And I just thought that you'd be interested. I also thought you'd be very interested in the Clay Center Elementary School, since we need to name that school. We keep calling it the school at Clay Center Road. And so, you know, that is one concept we might discuss, is being historical about, you know, the naming of that school. So anyhow, more on that later, I guess, but thank you so much, Annie, for coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
And also, I did get my book autographed, so I'm keeping it. But I will lend it out to you all. Just a few things, just to share with you. First off, I give you a little referendum update. We have 22 days left until the general election on November the 5th, and so early voting has begun. And locations include the Judicial Center in downtown Noblesville and the Carmel Library. So I'll continue to present referendum information at various community events throughout October and throughout the next 22 days. I would like to note that there was a really great story in the Indianapolis Star on the front page with, featuring Officer Greg DeWolff and kind of going through parts of, you know, of what school resource officers do. And they also ran on their website a little video of him. And so we, I just think it's really special that their, our SORs are getting, not only that some attention for the hard work that they do for our kids and our community, but also really informing the community about the value of a school resource officer beyond just being like an armed guard, but they really are part of the fabric of the school and really do a lot of proactive preventative things that is a real benefit to our community. And so, anyhow, I thought it was real strong, and I loved the headline that said, you know, if this referendum passes, you'll get some help. Because, you know, we just, we do have just the three officers that are covering those 14 schools, so that would be of great help. I also wanted to point out that Creekside Middle School, seventh-grade teams, recently raised over $4,000 for the Indy Honor Flight. And the Indy Honor Flight is where they take, they transport veterans from like World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and to see their memorials in Washington, DC. And so it's really a special way to thank them for their service to our country and also to, you know, to show the monument that was put in their honor. So a really great project by those seventh graders. We're proud of them. Coming up in just a few weeks is the Carmel Education Foundation's Ghosts and Goblins 2K and 5K Walk Run. That'll be on Saturday, the 26th, at 9:00 AM. It continues to be a fun event for all the families, and registration's still open for anybody that wants to participate. You know, I can't wait to see what's gonna happen, because the elementary schools and the middle schools are very competitive to see who will have the most participation. And last year, I was really amazed by the Killer Bees of Town Meadow and then the Crayons of Prairie Trace, and of course, the Clay Middle School. You know, they pretty much dominated the middle school division. So I'm interested to see who will knock them off maybe this year, and what will it be, the costumes? And there's a lot of awful, there's a lot of secrecy going on right now, you know, trying, waiting for the big reveal. And I've decided to, I'm going to attend again, and I'll be, my costume will be, I'm gonna go as a superintendent, like I did last year, and see if I can make 5K. But anyhow, I really want to encourage everybody to participate in that. The theme is Here We Glow Again. So I can guess, and there's gonna be something glowing. So I will challenge everybody here at this table and Mr. Kirschner to, you know, participate. I know, Katie, you're in a boot, so maybe-
Yeah, I'll cheer you all on.
Maybe you'll cheer, be a volunteer, maybe.
I can pull you in a wagon.
Volunteers, you know, that does count as participation. We also have an inter-district competition of the Golden Pumpkin that will be awarded to the staff that has the highest percentage of participation. So that'll be up for grabs as well. So I want to encourage everybody to go out there and participate in the Ghosts and Goblins. One last note on that is that, you know, our two directors, CF and F, are retiring, so we'd like to really send them off with a bang. We'd like to see 3,000 people sign up for the race this year, which would be a new track record. So one point that went up. Also wanted to share just some athletic things. This is championship season, so everything's happening right now. Our boys' tennis team had a great weekend. They dominated the field to become the 2019 regional champs, and then shortly thereafter were one of the semi-states, so they're semi-state champs. So they're gonna play in the state finals, the quarterfinals will be this Friday, and that's at home at noon. So I did get a chance to watch number one Carmel play number two Homestead, and it is amazing tennis that these kids are playing. I felt like it was at Wimbledon. Also want to congratulate the boys' cross-country team. They won the sectional meet on Saturday, and our girls' team placed third and will now advance to regionals. So cross-country kids are doing a wonderful job. Really excited about this one. Clay Middle School Boys Cross Country Team won the Hamilton County Cross Country Meet. And I don't know if you know much about the Hamilton County competitions, but it's fierce. There's 11 local middle and junior high schools that competed, and the boys won and the girls got second, so the Trojans were well represented up at the top of the lists. And then Clay Middle School student Kara Nas set a new school record with a time of 1019 for a 3K, which is a little under two miles. So I bet the high school's looking forward to having Kara move on up to the high school if she's a fast one. Our girls' soccer team, we're victorious, 2-0, we're guaranteed. Our girls' soccer team were victorious, 2-0 over Garren High School, become sectional champs, and they'll now compete at regionals next weekend. I did get a chance to go and walk with the ladies' golf team in the state finals, and it was just a beautiful day. And they competed fiercely. There's a lot, that golf course is very difficult, and to watch them kind of be resilient, you know, after having difficult situations and doing great shots, and they ended up finishing fifth as a team in the state. And then our own Katie Kay finished fifth individually, and so she's an all-state golfer. So congrats to that team. CHS Champions Together Bocce Ball Team, okay, are now the Unified Bocce Ball State Champs. So there's another state championship. I heard there were some updates to this year's competition, which included a DJ and lots of dancing at the Bocce Ball State Championship. So I think they really had an awesome time playing their, you know, their sport, but also just the whole environment was pretty fun, I think. And then finally, I gotta do a shout-out to the Carmel High School Football Team on their big win over Warren Central. They defeated Warren, had 28 to nothing, and it was a really, a cold rainy day, and they were able to win that game. So that puts them back in the race for the McTitle. And so North Central's got the sole lead right now. If someone knocks them off, then the Hounds will be back in the, in the race. And then I did want to shout-out to the student body and the fans who braved the weather, because it looked pretty miserable out there. And finally, I want to do my bell ringer. And my bell ringer this evening is about the choir concert. And I gotta tell you, I went to the choir concert, which is, it was last Wednesday, and the music was exceptional, as it always is, and the choreography was fun and it was very complicated. I still don't understand how they can do all that with that many kids and no one gets, gets, you know, punched. And I will point out that there was a Spandenberg kid up there that could really cut a rug. I also think, I can't see how they can dance that much and still sing as well as they do, because they're very athletic, for sure. But anyhow, the music, everything was great and impressive, but what I think was even more impressive for me was the message. The, you know, I was especially touched by a message and the themes of some of the songs. The one that really got me was a song called Please Stay. And that song was to bring awareness to teen suicide, the stigma that accompanies mental health. And the song was just beautiful, and the choreography that they used was very symbolic, that no one should suffer alone in silence, and that there's, there's people that will be with you, and if you will just reach out, there's people who will help you and be with you. And it was just, I got all choked up. I was glad that the house lights were down, because it was really, really good. And then other topics like inclusion and unity and celebrating our differences. And a song was called What Happens When a Woman, that focused on the empowerment of women. I could just go on and on about the messages, the positive messages, it was so uplifting. So I was really proud of those 500 kids that were singing, and that's about 10% of the high school population that was singing that night. And they put on just a simply awesome performance. So bravo to the Carmel High School choirs. And that's my bell ringer, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anything else from the board before we conclude? All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So, Jackie?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you. All right.